Mayor Robinson.
Yes, I'm not sure what that was, there's a lot of noise.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Call to order the regular meeting of the city council here of City Ransus Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, on January 9, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Please all rise in vacation. Laura, we'd like to give you thanks for the blessings you've bestowed upon us last year. We ask you to help guide us throughout the new year as we come into 2017. We ask you to watch over our young ones as they come through. We ask you to watch over our elderly that go throughout the day. We ask you to watch over visitors that come through Ransus Pass. We ask you all in your hands to do everything we can in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item 31, Employee Recognition of Milagros Medina, from the municipal court clerk. Ms. Henry?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager Sylvia, and the audience. We've been here several times for different things, and as y'all already know, Milagros, she goes by Millie, Medina, has been our court clerk for over a year now. She's a very hard worker, very dedicated, committed, and is always on top of everything that goes on in the court. She keeps us straight. I think Alan and I can vouch for that.
Absolutely.
She keeps us going, making sure that everything that is done is by the book. She has attended trainings, and she's vying to get her certification. And there's three levels for the court clerks, and she has a lot of interest to pursue her career as a court clerk. The court clerk has a very big, dynamic responsibility. You know, a lot of people don't like the word clerk, and I don't either, but that's a judicial terminology. You have the district clerk, the county clerk, which are elected positions. In the judicial system, clerk plays a big role in the courts. They're responsible for all the cases, they manage the case volume, the citations, phone calls, payments, and there's a large responsibility that comes with that title. They're more like office managers. Also, she assists in court in every way that she can. I have already shared with you that the traffic in the court has increased tremendously by a large phone volume and walk-ins. And I think we contribute that to the companies that have coming into our area, and the people getting used to our city ordinances, as well as to, well, teaching them that they need to abide the law. And so, being that said, she has a very, very important role that she has played throughout the year. We now have a new court clerk, and I'll bring her next week to introduce you to her. And she has become a big asset also in helping us with the activities and the traffic that we handle in our court. This is a certificate of appreciation, Millie, presented to you for your outstanding performance and exceptional commitment to teamwork. Awarded this the 9th day of January 2017, and it's signed by Mayor Adan Chapa, here for the city of Aransas Pass.
Millie, we do appreciate everything you've done. I asked Henry on my behalf to present that to you because I'm sick and I won't give you a cold, so I want to stay away from y'all. But thank you so much for all the hard work you did throughout the day, and these are long evenings too. We do appreciate that.
Thank you.
We know you're a good mentor for the next one coming on too, so thank you.
I also would like to recognize her mother. Her mother was a single parent when she was raised, and she's done an excellent job to raise this fine young lady.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Sylvia, you're up.
Mayor and Council, it's the first meeting of 2017, so it's a perfect opportunity to go through all of the 29 meetings that we had in 2016. You'd be amazed at the number and the volume that went through this office. So we'll start with, it's basically a year in review, and these are just the highlights. This does not even drill, this doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of everything that we've done in 2016. So the goals that were set out were transparency in governance, creating better financial stability, working our way out of our multiple legal issues that we started the year with, working on the infrastructure, working on those master plans, planning for growth, revamping some of the zoning ordinances, creating and easing the platting subdivision requirements so that we can continue to move in a growth pattern, improving our community appearance, making our area safer, public safety, and then also continuing to participate in our community. So, on the first target, we had the charter review committee set a minimum fund reserve, and that improved our credit rating. We had 29 council meetings, we met 54 open records requests, you appointed 22 people to board and commission's appointments, there were 247 ordinances or other actions, 65 ordinances and resolutions were approved, 35 beer and wine permits, and livestream, that should say livestream of planning and zoning as well as city council. So we're expanding the media availability of our boards and commission meetings. Financial stability, that's our double credit rating. We did establish that minimum fund that the other slide talked about. You did approve a CAFR, which is not only our budget, but moving forward with a consolidated financial report. If you see your bank statement, it really doesn't mean anything until you see it in its entirety as to what you are able to buy, much like what you would turn over to your bank for approval. We did have our 2007 CO debt refinance in April of 2016, and that's the bulk that's going toward the streets. We did receive some public safety grants, those were really the benefit of Chief Cox. We received a $55,000 planning grant from CDBG, and the 1 million sidewalk grant that you'll be seeing breaking ground coming in April and May, trying to do it so that it's outside of the school year. We started the year with double-digit legal. A lot of that was in defense of contracts that should be in the benefit of the city and were not. We did settle the Gulf Marine Industrial District Agreement, as well as their $675,000 utility bill. We are still in the Com Brown Harbor negotiations. I've been deposed several times, as have some of you. We did go to mediation, it did not yield fruitful results. Trial was set for January 31st, that trial has been moved to April 24th. The court is hearing a different plea to the jurisdiction from the city on the bills without contract that the company says are due. The slander suit was settled, they had sued the mayor and I for slander. We released $4,000 worth of property liens and continue to remove those liens that had old streets and mowing and paving liens. We did complete the annexation of Sherwood Forest and its defense in court, and we currently have the district court case on the zoning board of adjustment appeal. As you're aware, zoning board of adjustment is quasi-judicial, it doesn't come here, it immediately goes to district court. Infrastructure, we completed the 2725 water line. We are 75% done with Highland. The water line is in, the street is en route. We completed 13th Street and Arch Street. Myrtle is completed, 13th Street had some other drainage and underlying issues that were complete. The planning for Johnson is underway, the planning for Rhodes and Beasley is underway. You approved 13 additional streets in this 2016 CIP. LaMont, if you drive by, LaMont is underway right now. Prior was just completed. The wastewater treatment plant saw the dewatering unit. It cleared the raceways and gave us 30% additional capacity. We did join the TCQ overflow program. During heavy rains, our sewers have massive inflow of drainage system which overburdens the system, and then you see it coming up through the manholes and the sidewalks. We allocated capital improvement funds for the first time, even though the charter requires a capital improvement plan as part of your budget, that had not been the practice. We do have better automatic pumps, we did hire a pump mechanic, and we changed protocol requiring staff rounds after 15 minutes of continuous rains as opposed to 30. And we did complete the Com Brown Harbor drainage line reroute on Huff, which had blown out the bulkhead by Redfish Willies. That's a picture of probably the most severe flooding after the post-May event. We did grant a rideaway blanket easement to AEP, which allows us to continue work on the parks' master plan so we can move lights and things out of the way. The area where Shrimp Marie sits right now is supposed to have a street running through it, so we are working on removing all of those lines so that it is indeed kept as a park in perpetuity. And again, our first capital improvement plan you guys adopted in October of 2016. This is probably two of the most important items. This is dredge clearing, 30% of the raceway at the wastewater treatment plant. And this bottom picture is what was a 96-inch drainage line in a ditch right now that goes nowhere, that has caved in on itself with sand, dirt, and thyme. So, you know, we have the problems upstream and downstream when the water has nowhere to go. That's going to be going out for bid in the February timeframe. In terms of growth, we did the Sherwood Forest again. We annexed 24.6 acres from Gallagher, that was a friendly annexation. We had 18 total tax resale properties, and 10 are in front of you today. We began the 2725 annexation, but settled with the industrial district agreements that will net us $400 additional thousand into the general fund, which will go to offset the requirement of that minimum fund requirement. So there was no additional tax or requirement, that money is just going to go back into the kitty as a savings. The off-street parking regulations were approved. I think the biggest heated issue was the 10-by-10 stalls that received several planning commission meetings. Staff had recommended a reduction in an 8-by-10 so that property owners wouldn't need a bigger footprint to meet their parking requirements, but planning commission and the boat owners and big truck owners weren't having any of that. So the 10-by-10 stalls remain. We corrected the mobile and modular home definitions. The R16 district, the footprint was reduced to 1,000 square feet, and the R10 and R7A, 850 square feet. We removed the RV from conditional use in all residential districts except the mobile home. The biggest part of this is there's a 10% administrative adjustment so that if a property owner or a business owner is trying to meet the intent of the code, and let's say they're short one or two parking spaces, and that's within 10%, we won't pull them through the knot hole, making them go to zoning board of adjustment and making them go through all these boards and commissions. It is a power that's granted to the city manager and now the public works director. We platted over 130 acres in 2016. The majority of that was the, what is going to be called the Hogan subdivision development, that's the 350 total home build-out. This is the plat of Captain's Cove, which has about 75 homes in it, but 130 acres in 2016 is more than the five previous years combined. Improved community appearance, this is a big one. This took staff, we started the my AP process going into each neighborhood. Were quickly taken away to the street reconstruction and the drainage. The top picture is what happens in the flats. The police department really has adopted that area, and they do a quarterly cleanup. Unfortunately, as soon as they're done, it looks like that in the next couple of weeks. So, the cameras and the more concerted effort, and a dedicated code enforcement officer will hopefully address some of that. They've been up and down checking the camping permits to make sure folks aren't just leaving stuff and disposing of stuff out in that area. Demolitions, just from June to November, 24 demolitions were approved. That's the six-and-six program, that's six demolitions every six weeks. So, the demolitions are moving fast and furious. We're at the point now of the harder ones that are now cinder block and, you know, have some other outline issue. Many of the demolitions required almost a hazmat suit, lots of needles and drug paraphernalia, so it's a dual effort, it's cleaning up the neighborhood and also meeting the public safety. The public safety side saw you had the sex offender residence, you had the 65 mile an hour request on TechStot, on 35 that was reduced. The privilege for concealed carry. We had Chief Cox do several fire safety ordinances, our fire inspection, our fire walkthrough. I'm really proud of our hurricane planning, our hurricane reentry plan. Training has been at an all-time high for both police and fire, and I don't know if you saw on the news today, Eric is leading some training at the state level. I'm pushing him to lead at the national level, except we may lose him if I push that any further. Somebody's going to steel him up. And if you weren't or didn't participate on either side of the camera on New Year's Eve, Facebook Live was probably one of our most visited events. They took a camera out in real life during the New Year's Eve event, and it was not only well-attended, but it gave folks a real insight as to what your neighbors are doing on New Year's Eve. Community participation, this year the council has 50,000 discretionary expense money, and it goes every year. You can see from the Easter egg hunt, to the Little League, to Rock the Dog, to Vets Fishing with Vets, Shrimp Marie, Project Graduation, the Little League leases, the Aransas Pass Hosa, the custom car show, the AP for youth, the VFW, the St. Mary, the Fourth of July, the Bacon Fest, Trunk or Treat, Fall Feast, and our shoes for seniors and children. This year, we had a very, very, very good event with our seniors. It probably humbled the staff and I more than we thought possible. The oldest senior that we helped was 90, and she was just as feisty. We were able to help seniors that are in the nursing home that don't have any relatives who either provide or come visit. We had four of those that we were able to help that otherwise would not have had any shoes. Inter-local agreements, this is just the tip of the iceberg of the agencies that we work with. Not just the Transportation Commission, but AEP, the DEA, Bay Limited, JJ Fox Construction, A&amp;M Corpus Christi, San Patricio County, Aransas County, Chamber of Commerce, and so on and so forth. So, this gets us to improvements needed and in progress. Obviously, 2016 wasn't a whole cakewalk the whole year. We are going through the meter reading issue and the conversion of the manual read meters. You can see from the top picture, that's what some of our meters look like, and that's a good meter. A lot of them are green and algae and not really readable. The bottom is our current radio meters, and that's what we are transitioning to. We are at the point right now that we can only give you information. We're basically six weeks behind on information because our reads, our billing and reads are 30 days behind. By the time we run the billing cycle, that's another 15 days. So, you may have had a leak in November, but it doesn't show up until your January bill. So by that time, folks have forgotten, they had friends over, they had company over, they had, et cetera. And they don't recall why the January bill is so high. So, our plan moving forward is to equip our police department vehicles, who are traversing the city anyway on a regular basis, so that we're getting constant reads, so that you have information at your fingertips on a regular basis. We're not waiting for that once a month read. I'm hoping that we have probably 75% of our meters converted by the end of the month. The top reads that we've sensed our meters out are losing 30 and 40% water read, meaning we were reading 30 and 40% less than what was actually used. And the new meters are reading every seven seconds. So the new meters are 30 and 40% higher in terms of utility bills. So we're going to do a review of the revenues, and if the revenues are indeed as high as we think they're going to be, we're going to come back to the council and ask for a reduction of water rates. We've set the budget at a certain level, and that's what the level should be. I can't tell you until they're all in on what that number would be. And obviously, the floods in May lead to a flood protection issue. We have joined Aransas County in their resilience plan and their flood mitigation and trying to be a better partner in the National Flood Insurance Program. That's going to mean a community rating system program participation, and that's going to mean a city planner really dedicated to development standards and building codes that make us resilient, make us less flood-prone. And then we have the new FEMA maps that were released a few months ago that, on North Commercial especially, where flood insurance wasn't required before flood insurance will now be required. And that's not anything we've done, that's just part of the new Federal Reserve. So, both of those projects have a concerted education requirement. We're going to be out creating a video, asking for volunteers to go through the readers, go through a meter changeout, go through the volume, have folks turn on and off, show folks how to read their meter, show folks where the meters are actually located on their property, and how to keep them clean so that we have easy access to them. So that's in the next 30 to 60-day timeframe. So, any questions?
On the street repairs, do you have anything for North McCamber? Where it keeps caving in, there's a T?
Yes, JJ Fox Construction just reconstructed a little bit upstream. The sanitary sewer line, North McCamber, is on the street list slated to be repaired this year. And actually, it's a very large section of North McCamber, it connects all the way to Cleveland, the section that's due to be repaired. They're on LaMont, they're on LaMont right now. The PowerPoint is posted online under city council already.
Is there any questions for council? Thank you, Sylvia. This is going to bring us to the consent agenda, item 5. All of the follow-up items of consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted to one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless council members so request. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. You have item 5, approval of December 19, 2016, regular meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to not vote on that since I wasn't present. I would abstain.
You got that, too?
I'm sorry, you scared me, that just sounded like a voice coming in.
It was.
It was, yeah.
Mr. Lawrence, six-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing open for the purposes of discussing an amendment to the code ordinances to implement a temporary moratorium on submission, acceptance processing, et cetera, of any application for a permit or license for the installation of above-ground wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-way or on public or private property. Sylvia?
Mayor and council, this is really the request of staff. We have a company and other companies who are wanting to come in to install antennas for cellular and other service wireless kinds of things. There are ordinances across the country that require those facilities to fit in, i.e. not just a tower. You can hide it behind a building, you can make it part of the building wall, you can do a multitude of things. We have extremely wide right-of-ways in some of our streets that are not developed, and we have companies who want to come in and just plop something sort of in the middle of nowhere because they have allegedly the legal right to do that. We're asking for a moratorium to give staff the opportunity to research it further and come back with a model ordinance that fits not only the tower companies, but more importantly, the city and its residents.
Any questions or comments of the council? Any members of the public have any questions or comments? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item sixteen?
I make a motion, we approve item six-two.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 This brings us to item seven-one, consider enacted on approving administrative agreement with Texas Municipal League, IEBP, auxiliary benefits for the year 2016 through 2017.
Sylvia?
Mayor and council, this is really a cleanup part. We are members of the Texas Municipal League pool for health insurance. This would allow us to provide COBRA coverage, the continuing of coverage, once they leave city employment. The employee pays for it completely. It would allow TML to be able to offer the health insurance to the employee.
Any questions from council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item seven-one?
I make a motion that we approve the administrative agreement with TML. Second?
All affairs say aye.
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 This brings us to item seventeen, consider enacted resolution 2017-798, nomination to Nuances County Appraisal District to finish out 2016 through 2017 term.
Sylvia?
This is a request by Nuances County. If you'll recall, our last meeting, we didn't have time to advertise and nominate, so we opted not to do that. Well, Nuances County has come back and said, oh, by the way, we've got two people that we'd like for you to vote for. Staff has no knowledge of who these people are nor how they would represent the city of Aransas Pass.
Do we vote on one or both, or?
You would have to vote on one. They're filling a vacancy created by Lisa Carter-Hunt.
We can start with Vicki, and then we'll go down the line. See who gets the most votes. Let somebody get some grease.
No.
The nominees are Leo Gonzalez for Tolosa Midway ISD and Gabrielle Hippold, nominated by Flower Bluff ISD. Vicki, how would you like to vote?
I would say, it's randomly Leo Gonzalez.
Leo Gonzalez.
Gabriella Hippold.
Okay.
I don't know if I said it right or not.
Sure. Carrie?
Gabriella Hippold.
Okay. Billy?
Gabrielle Hippold.
Okay. The city of AP's nominee is Gabrielle Hippold. Wish I could give you more information about her.
Need a motion.
Somebody said she's a nice lady.
So we need a motion?
Oh.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion that we appoint Gabriella Hippold to Nuaces County Appraisal District. Second?
All affairs say aye.
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 Okay. Next item is an awarding of contract for design documents to LJ Engineering for sidewalk construction of the TechStot Transportation Accessibility Program. If you'll recall, LJ was our firm who assisted in the application submittal of that grant. We're finally at the point of design, and TechStot says if they can have the drawings and things done by March, the contract will be let in April with constructions to begin in May, which would coincide with the summer months, and they'd be done by the time school began again in the fall. So, Mr. Vedeteau is here, if you have any questions. The city's portion is approximately 180,000 plus some in-kind that we may need to offer in terms of personnel or equipment.
Is this the sidewalk that I noticed, like, on Yocum all the way down to?
The hike and bike trail. Yes, it's the hike and bike trail. It connects the library, it crosses Harrison, it will connect all of the schools, and it'll end up at the high school.
Okay.
Any questions for council? Vicki, any questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item seven-four?
Seven-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, seven-three.
I make a motion, we approve item seven-three.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 Next item is a, consider enacted on awarding an RFP for a retail energy provider. We did go out for RFP. If you recall, the city is participating in a, what's called the TCAP program, the Coalition for Affordable Power. We tried this a few years ago, if you'll recall. The rates in the market were so good that we were unable to get out of the TCAP application pool. And while it may serve a purpose for larger cities, it really doesn't serve a purpose for smaller cities because we don't have a seat at the table in terms of negotiation. If we have any issues, we've got to go through a larger city, Corpus Christi, San Antonio, or Dallas, to have our concerns aired. Jim Gray, who was the city manager in Ingleside, sat on their board, but you can tell by Ingleside's rates, that really didn't do a whole lot of good. So, right now, the, I have a representative from TXU Energy who was the lowest bidder, if I can pull the contract documents up. And our current rate is in the seven-cent range. The city does pay over $1 million in electricity, and I don't know if folks are aware, but every time you see a street light on or the lights in the park, the city's footing that bill. That is not an AEP bill, that is a city utility bill, so. Jason, would you like to address, would you like to address the council?
Good evening, council. Just wanted to stop by again. I was here last meeting. Once again, we came back in and bid out for pricing for y'all. We have some really good rates with you, for y'all, and we also have some other benefits. One thing that we offer along with our good rates is we're also offering what we call greenbacks. So if y'all ever do any energy efficiencies, say y'all put the air conditioner in, LED lights in, y'all can get, depending on what term of contract y'all go with, which y'all have seen in the presentation that we gave y'all, can determine how much y'all can get back towards, given back to y'all bills besides bringing y'all's rates from the seven-cent range. And I don't recall the exact rate, but I believe we were down in the four cents for y'all now.
I'm trying to pull it up.
We originally had signed y'all back when, we thought y'all's contract was coming out, and we were to save y'all a tremendous amount of money. But like Sylvia said, y'all, we ended up finding out y'all were in another contract. We have several cities that ended up like that, so it was kind of like the contracts were hidden because TCAP was coming back in two to three, four years prior to your contracts coming up. We don't like to go more than a year, so our cities and our customers know, hey, you got another contract coming up in a year, and it gives them more of a chance to look at the variety in pricing.
We would lock in the rate now, though, even though?
Yes, we would lock in the rate now. Your contract doesn't end until December 31st this year, which starts January 1st of 2018, but your rates will be locked in for the term of the contract.
Which ends up affecting the 17, 18 budget cycle.
So what is, Sylvia, what is the rate that they're giving us? I don't have a copy of that.
I don't have it in front of me either, and Mary's gone.
I believe what we had at the rate, and don't quote me on this because I don't have it in front of me because we sent it all to you.
She has to quote, she has to quote you, you're on the record.
Okay. Well, if, give me a few minutes, I'll pull it up, and then I'll get right back with you, okay? I have my paperwork inside my computer.
Okay.
Okay?
Alan, can we pass on this and move on to the next item?
Sure.
And then come back to it? I apologize, with Mary being gone, it's, I'm bouncing back and forth.
Seven-five, Sylvia?
Yes. The next item is another housekeeping item. The golf carts licensing and permitting, for whatever reason, was listed as a duty of the finance director. We are just clarifying that, that it would be with the building official and the people who issue permits.
Do I hear a motion for approval for seven-five?
Make a motion, we approve item seven-five.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Seven-six.
Next item is a request for Relay for Life. They'd like to use the Shrimpery grounds October 7th and 8th, 2017. They're moving early, so that way it gives them a chance for publication and planning.
Can I verify, clarify the time that they want to use?
We have a, thank you, we have a representative for Relay for Life here.
Hi, my name's Pen.
Eight PM to 1 PM.
Yes.
Saturday and Sunday, and on that, on the copy we have, it has 8 AM to 12 AM.
No.
Also, 8 PM to 1 AM.
Our show's 8 PM to 1 AM.
Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
What is the correct?
We were asking 8 AM to 1 AM. We're wanting enough time, because we, this is the first time I've done this, so we don't know how much time we're going to need to set up. It's going to be, the event's going to be from 12 to 12.
12?
12.
Noon to 12 AM.
Noon till 12 noon.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for council?
Will there be a problem setting up earlier than?
No, you just coordinate with our parks, just coordinate with the city secretary's office, city manager's office, shouldn't have a problem.
There's no question for council? Do I hear a motion for approval for item seven? Six? Six.
I make a motion, we approve item seven-six.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. I would like to invite y'all, we're having our kickoff on Thursday at the BFW in Ingleside. Y'all are more than welcome to come. Audience, you can.
Thank you.
And you're more than welcome to gather a team together.
I think you should challenge the city departments to get a team together. Next item is a request from Project Graduation for a donation. They did not list a specific dollar amount, so Cindy's going to get up and either tap dance, or I don't know what she's going to do for the donation amount.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Cynthia Vazquez. I am a resident and the board secretary of Project Graduation. This year, we didn't have a specific amount that we were requesting. We were able to get our 501(c)(3) category through the IRS approved. Every year, I don't know if anybody else knows, but working through Project Graduation, I've learned that every year, the city generously provides the use of the Aquatic Center. So we want to make sure we have permission to do that again for our seniors this year. I know that the staff volunteers, and we have volunteer.
Security.
We have volunteer security through the police department. The police department also buys our high school seniors, our graduating seniors breakfast, which I think is pretty awesome. So I just come before you, and, I don't know, I can auction off, you know, start with a bid. Somebody tell me if it's hot or low. I mean, you know, we're grateful for anything. We already feel like the city is very generous in the use of the facilities and, you know, having officers, and, you know, our chief of police supports it as well, so I'll leave it all up to y'all.
You just got a really good drug fund money deposit, so.
Hey, what did we give last year? Do you know?
$5,000.
I believe you gave $5,000 last year. Now, I don't know if that was inclusive, or that was in addition to the facility used.
That was in addition to the facility.
No, well, I'm going to just let you know, Sylvia, I'm abstaining from this vote because my wife's a member, vice president or something, right?
Yes. The mayor's wife is vice president of our group. She works very hard in the volunteering.
I wonder the weather she knows.
Well, I'll make a motion that we award the Red Space Project Graduation $5,000.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Cindy, can you get one on Sarah Lee on the dates for the Aquatic Center, so we can work around that?
This is real, item seven-eight.
Mayor and council, the items before you, we have a variety of tax resale properties, but based on some questions from some of the council members regarding amounts and use and when they would transition over, I request that we table these, or one of you guys request a table.
Well, I make a motion that we table all the tax sales till?
Next meeting?
Can you, can we do it till the February meeting? Because I've got to get with Limebarger.
Well, hopefully, we can get something with the school board and see what they?
Okay, till the February meeting, then.
Till the first February meeting.
Second?
All affairs say aye.
Aye.
Bring this back to seven-four. Yep, senor?
Okay, just verified the pricing that we were offering y'all. Y'all are currently at, I believe it was a .074 on y'all's energy rate currently right now, and we were able to get y'all all the way down to .0359004.
Say that again, 03? Awesome, that's more than half.
That's on a 36-month contract.
Awesome.
Yes, yes.
Change there. Sounds good. Did you get that, Vicki?
50% savings.
I did, uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion for approval for item seven-four?
Make a motion, we approve item seven-four.
With TXU Energy.
For TXC.
It starts January 2018.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve TXU Energy, starting January 1, 2018?
2018.
Second the motion.
All affairs say aye.
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 Does it bring us to updates, Sylvia?
Mayor and council, the two updates that we have, you already heard a little bit about the shoe drive, that it was a huge success. We plan to continue that program next year, of course, budget allowing. The other item is going to be the Harrison Boulevard project. You heard a little bit about the sidewalk. Harrison Boulevard is due for a TechStot revamp. We've been working closely with Keeper Aransas Pass Beautiful and TechStot. They are going to remove the oaks in that area. We have plans to transplant those to Veterans Memorial Park. Harrison will then be relined with palm trees and some native grasses and flowering plants in that area. It's the section of Harrison, starting from Cleveland all the way to Goodnight. The city plans to add some additional funds to take it all the way to commercial and use that same design and funds at the entrance by the Donut Palace on 35, in that sort of concrete jungle. It is a move by TechStot, they're trying to get away from all of the concrete, they're trying to put in more grass, and turning it over to their local cities for maintenance. So.
That certainly would improve. Anything would be an improvement.
This will bring us to item?
Ten-one.
Ten-one. Consider enacted on amending the code of ordinance, chapter 565-162, registration of guests, provided a repealer, provided effective date. What is this, Sylvia? With RVs?
Yes, mayor and council, if you recall, the RV park regulation and development standards required a registration of guests. At the time that we were discussing the item, it was more from a public safety standpoint. Eric has pointed to recent state law that does not allow us to do that, so we need to remove the requirement from the, from the code.
Do I hear a motion to remove that requirement from the code?
Well, I make a motion that we- Well, I make a motion that we amend the code of ordinance, chapter five, section five, one, six, two.
Second. All the first say aye.
Aye.
This will bring us to item thirteen, our citizen comments, is seven forty-three. Floor's not open, everybody would like to make a comment.
I'm Liz Brawley, and I live at nine oh two South Mont. And I had considered myself lucky that I didn't get caught up in the big water bill scandal until today. I didn't receive my bill, and I think that has more to do with the mail than City Hall. So I came today and got a copy of my bill that is due, and it's a hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents. It's considerably higher than I'm used to paying. I'm usually the only one home. My husband works out of town. If he's home, he's home maybe thirty-six hours at a time. It's not long. There was a meter reader there last week, digging the meter up. He had no past data to determine what I had been using versus, and this, this, it's not this reading, I know it's not this reading. But I asked why there was no data to compare it to. I mean, it would make sense that if they're out reading meters, they would know, okay, well, this is what they used last month. Whoa, they've got a big, you know, reading this month, go knock on the door and say, hey, you know, you might want to check, you might have a leak, something. No, he had nothing to compare it to. He had to dig about eight, ten inches of dirt off of it. He was told he could read by meter from the highway. I've been told differently, that it may have a two-hundred-foot read from the scanner. My lot is a hundred and ninety feet deep, and if it's buried under eight inches of dirt, I mean, that's got to obstruct the reading.
You got a new meter, ma'am?
I have the new meter. That's another thing, is I don't know how to read my meter. I want somebody to come and show me how to read it, how to determine if there is a leak. Now, when he was here the, last week, there's no leak. So if there's no leak, what constitutes the huge difference in the monthly billing? I mean, I, I, I want somebody to come and show me how to read my meters when I'm asking, so I can, you know, check it periodically myself, find out if I have a leak or if I don't have a leak. I mean, why would the city not consider holding a workshop to teach the citizens how to read their own meters? The, I mean, it was, the old meters, it was easy. You just ran out there and looked. If you knew you didn't have water running in the house and your meter was running, well, you knew you had a problem. These new ones, it's impossible. I mean, I think we should be taught how to read them ourselves, so we can catch a problem, if there is a problem. But I myself, I don't, I don't know what constitutes the high reading. There was no leak. I've not fixed anything. So I mean, I don't know how to, to fix this.
Sylvia, would this have anything to do with what you were saying about the new meters are reading thirty to forty percent higher?
Yeah, I'm more concerned that she doesn't, they weren't able to give her a read, because if she has a radio meter, the guys have something like this, and it's called a data logger, and they should be able to stand.
I went out there and talked to him, and he said, he, he said, before he went out on these readings, he had a whole list of readings he had to do, that he asked for previous data, and he said he couldn't get it. According to the, the radial meter company, those meters should hold three months of data. So where is, where was the data? Where is the data?
We can send somebody out tomorrow with a datalogger with you, not only at the site reading the meter, but you turning on and off water, so you can.
So I can see, yes, yes. That's what I'd like, because like I said, I mean, I, right now, I'm clueless on how to determine if, you know.
And we are going to do a, just for the council, because I can't respond, but we are going to do a training video. The problem is, the, the company, all of that is proprietary. We have to create our own. So Jeff and I, we're going to do whether this past week was horrible, but if you'd like to volunteer to be one of our folks in the video, we'd go out there.
Oh, heck no. Oh, come on, Liz.
But, you know, it's, it's information rich, because if you're having the issue, obviously others are having the issue too.
Right.
There are two indicators on there. One shows if you have a leak, it's like an intermittent leak, a toilet clapper or something, I'd say. If it's a constant, then there is a problem. Right now, that's what I explained to you earlier, because we're thirty days in a year and then two weeks for the billing, you might have had a leak in November, and we won't know until next year.
Yeah, but if I haven't fixed anything, if I haven't fixed anything, and, and he was there just last week, and my meter's not showing a leak, that's.
I'm not sure who the reader was, but we can schedule something with you to go out, do the read, take the data logger graphic for you. If you have a radio meter, you should have thirty days. I'll ask you later who the meter.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Steve Warren, six one seven North Houston Street. I'd be happy to be on the video, if you want to see that, if you get ahold of me. The reason I came up here is I was up here, like, two meetings ago about the property on the six hundred block in North Houston that had been scheduled for demolition back earlier this summer. Still has nothing been done about it. They did get the windows all boarded back up on it from the last time when somebody was going through there, but the house is still standing. They said it was going to be within that month that it would be tore down, and still, still nothing there, still.
We have photographs right behind you, just go.
That's six forty?
Yes.
That is six forty North Houston. There was a, the owner was in the process of selling it to his mother-in-law. Now that she has ownership, she has hired this gentleman, and he actually pulled his permit to demo that today.
So the permit is pulled.
So he gets thirty days, it's an extension, so in the next thirty days, you'll see them taking that down.
Thank you, Roy. Thank you, thank you, Roy.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a citizen comment?
I'm Virginia Buckin. I own Super Good Sandwiches. And I think in July, the fire department came by and said that they had to inspect our building, and they charged us a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We paid that, and I understand that that was, that you are not doing that anymore. So what happened to our hundred and twenty-five dollars?
That's a good question. Mr. Cox.
There you go.
Right behind you, man.
So what happened is, at the time, we haven't, we've restructured, and you guys have approved the fee that we did. We came through, we saw that it was inequitable. The same, the four-story hotel that I would spend twenty to thirty hours of multiple inspections, or was paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Small places like yours are getting charged a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We realized there was an, there was an equity into it. So we presented to you and changed it. Unfortunately, you were one of the first inspections. We came in, we looked at, you know, we're trying to follow the code ordinances as if we were supposed to be doing inspections. As we started, and the code ordinance required all businesses a hundred and twenty-five dollars every year. We changed it. Now it's biennial, and there's no charge. You just have to get caught before that date.
How many, how many do you speak for a time?
I think we're at about forty, if it was before that.
If council wants to make a motion at the next meeting for us to refund those forty, then we will bring you an item to do.
Okay, I think we should. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Is there anybody else that has a citizen comment?
If not, that's seven fifty-one, we're going to close our citizen comments. And we're going to move to executive session, pursuant to our chapter five five one point oh seventy-one, consultation with our city attorney over legal matters on item one. Item two, five five one point oh seventy-two deliberations on the real estate property of Cumberon Harbor. Item three will be section five five one point oh seventy-two deliberations regarding the real estate property of LWR Development. People that've come, and if you're happy to stay, you're more welcome to stay. The ones that leave, we appreciate you starting off the new year with us here at the city Rens Pass. This is your community, your home, so stay involved. And we'll see you in a little bit, Lord willing.
Sylvia, will you call me?
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to call you from the council booth.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I didn't realize what it was until I turned on.
Relay for Love kickoff.
That's my anniversary present, this is about her sit.
Oh, I know what's happening Thursday, but it's during the day. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Penny. And thank you, Cindy. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Penny. And thank you, Cindy. Thank you, ma'am.